Two minutes.
Trish said she turned the A C down.
I did, it was so hot in here. I can't breathe up there. It was really hot in here.
I feel this fine, don't worry about it.
No, it got a little chilly.
I wasn't gonna say it.
What you did.
Because T you did all that.
I think once, once a month. I don't know, it was over my desk.
Please send it in the mail. It's embarrassing because I'm like, twenty six retiring.
Yep, we're good.
All right. Call Meany Jordan and ask everybody to stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Right off the get go, public comment. Anyone have any public comment? If not, well. Gerald, do you have anything?
No, I, I already gave my public comment. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, we'll move right into the budget review.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners, Tammy Robinson, Finance Director. I have a little PowerPoint here that just kind of walks through our process and the things we've done. It shows some efficiencies, it shows where we've been and where we're at. We start our budget calendar in March each year. We have reorganized both our short-term needs and objectives in relation to long-term goals. And the baseline is set annually by the Commissioners. We prepare and adopt in accordance with state laws and statutes. The deadlines are set for Appraiser and Clerk offices, both with the property valuation, the value of the mill, and it also includes revenue neutral rate information as far as when it goes out and how we handle that per statute. And then we have publication notices that are required in order to notify the public when the hearing is. Inside our budgets, we have personnel, which includes benefits, and contractual commodities and capital outlay as categories. And we do have appropriation requests, and those forms are sent out to outside agencies, and they do come in and present to the Commission. And with the Commission's request, they do list other funding sources and provide budgetary needs as well as their financial statements. Ad valorem taxes, we've restructured this in 2023. Previously, we had twenty levy funds, and 2023, we were down to two levy funds, the General and Debt Service. Currently, we have one levy fund, the General. The budgeted mill levy decreased from seventy point four one six to sixty point one oh nine in 2023. That equated to a tax levy decrease of one point one million. In 2024, we decreased to fifty six point seven five three mils. And 2025, we went down to fifty four point eight oh three. And currently, we have the budget, the mill rate set at fifty six point three oh one. That could fluctuate just a little bit based on valuation, the final valuations that come in in November. And one of the things that's really important with this ad valorem taxes is how much tax we get from the residents and commercial businesses. Last week, when we presented our budget, we did have a constituent come in, and they had cited an example. But it was just a cut and dry example. There's a lot more criteria to it. And so I did ask our Appraiser to join us tonight and just to give a little bit more background on the information of how taxes are affected in the two counties. He has some information here that I'm gonna have him pull up and present. And this is just for clarification purposes because I, I feel like the people were provided information that wasn't accurate enough for them to just hear and make a decision on how they felt about the tax base in Gary County and Riley County. So Travis Lilly, our Appraiser, was gonna come up and address this for me.
So, so the comment was about the taxes on the $250,000 house, right? And, and the comment was accurate. On a $250,000 house, the taxes are more in Gary County than they are in Riley County. I think the point that didn't come across is, you know, those aren't even the same house. A $250,000 house in Gary County doesn't look like a $250,000 house in Riley County, not close. So what I did was, I thought, you know, what's the standard house someone might be looking for? I went with three-bedroom, two-bath ranch style on a slab. That's what's being built a lot right now. And I did the fifteen hundred to two thousand square foot range. I looked at some houses that were built in the last two years and sold, and I used sale prices to kind of give people an idea of what that house, what the value of that house might be or the worth as it pertains to, you know, the same actual house. And if you notice, the mean sale price of, now, now the, I couldn't get the exact same sizes, right? They're just, the data set didn't include both. But we're looking at around $290,000 house, that three-bedroom, two-bath, fifteen to nineteen, two thousand square foot house in Gary County. And that same house in Riley County, though slightly larger, was in the $370,000 range. If you look at it per square foot, $175 per square foot in Gary County, that's true measure. You can compare those across the board to almost $210 a square foot in Riley County. So when you take that house, the taxes are a little higher in Gary County on that house than they are in Riley County, but not near to the extent, I think $600, something dollars is what was presented. It's not near to that extent. That's, that set of information there. And then on the next page. So what I did was, you know, rather than just me trying to decide, you know, what is a typical house, you know, that folks are looking for, is what is the median appraised value for a house in Gary County versus Riley County? So the median appraised value in Gary County is $175,195. And, and that's every residential property in Gary County, that's the median value. And in Riley County, that same median is $241,400. So if you take that assessed value and then the mill levy that's, I believe that is Riley County's final approved mill levy, and that's our approved mill levy. The tax bill on, in Gary County for that median valued house would be $1,134, and in Riley County, it's $1,053. So eighty dollars difference. So again, not, not quite what, again, the intent wasn't to mislead, I don't think, but it's just throwing out numbers like that, you know, there's a little more to it.
Yeah.
And then also, if you look at the ad valorem taxes as percentage of whole tax base by class, I did residential and commercial. Is one of the big differences between Riley County and Gary County is the amount of commercial businesses. And so the total ad valorem tax from the residence, the residences in Gary County account for sixty two point eight percent of that total ad valorem tax need. And our commercial accounts for eighteen point six percent. If you go across to Riley County, those residences are paying sixty seven point nine percent, and their commercial's over twenty-two percent. So what that says is that, you know, even though each house in Gary County might be paying slightly more per house, the demand on all the residences is greater in Riley County. They're putting more of a burden on those residences as compared to Gary County. And that's the number of residences in Riley County is far superior. So, and then again, they're placing a higher need on their commercial, and we just don't have the commercial base that they have. So that helps offset that ad valorem tax need. So yeah, I thought, we thought it was worth clarifying that, again, the comment of $250,000 is different between Riley and Gary County, but we're not talking about the same property at that set value. Just, it's not that simple. So I thought that was worth clarifying.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
To let folks know, a typical house, it is about eighty dollars more, not six hundred and something. All right?
I heard that.
Yeah. So you can see with the examples that our Appraiser Travis gave to you, it's really difficult to take this example and create an apples-to-apples comparison. So just taking one little piece of the whole database of the information that affects this doesn't give you a true picture. So Travis did a good job pulling all that information and just, just providing it a little bit more to the extent that you can see there's a lot of factors there that make up the differences. One thing he had mentioned today when we were talking about this is, you know, how much is our total ad valorem tax in comparison to our budget? And when I took the two and compared just their funds that are levied, so just their general fund on these two, they were fifty-three percent and fifty-four percent. So it's not, that is relatively accurate when you say, how much does it take for us to support based on other revenue sources? And how much does it take them to support based on other revenue sources being available? And they're very close, which, you know, I mean, counties don't have a lot of different revenue sources. And so it tells you that we're not necessarily off-base with what our needs are.
Travis, for clarification, residential's at eleven point five percent.
Correct.
Exactly. Five what, commercial?
Twenty-five percent.
Yep.
Yeah. So, so the, the appraised value as opposed to assessed value of residence carries less of a burden because it's assessed at a small rate?
Thank you.
So this is just a quick little graph that just shows you what our valuation in the levy dollar history is from 2017 to 2026. So the dark blue line on the top gives you your assessed valuation, and the blue line on the bottom gives you the levy history. And so you can see that our levy has remained relatively stable throughout time, even though our valuation has increased. And so just with that, it, I mean, it would, you would expect that normally you might take that growth and add it to your budget. But in this case, you can see we're not really doing that. So one other thing that I wanted to point out, and there is a document up there that says budget facts. And on that document, it also has some accomplishments and some efficiencies. And so that information is available in that packet. But just some key, key items I wanted to list is there are several things that we have changed to help with the efficiency of what we're doing at Gary County. So our financial software has changed. And while we have had some hiccups and there's been some challenges, we have, we do have a lot more accountability and transparency to the taxpayers with the financial reports that are available. And in addition to that, the, the financial reports that go out to the department heads are much more user-friendly, easier to follow. And having those line item budgeting, which is something that we added with this new financial software and a new financial coding, has also helped our department heads when they're working on their budgets each year. Another thing we did was previously, we had an outside fund for benefits, and we pulled those into the departmental budgets. So that helps the department, the department heads be more responsible and accountable for the actual costs of an employee because benefit costs are anywhere between thirty-nine and forty-two percent of what our salaries are annually. And so when we hire someone, we need to make sure that we have those funds available to pay for not only their salary, but their benefits. And then we implemented a pay and evaluation plan for county employees in 2023. And then the Sheriff's Office, they held out on it in 23, but they did implement one in 2024, so over a two-year period. And in addition to that, we were able to add K P N F as a benefit for the Sheriff's Office. We've adopted a fund reserve policy, comprehensive financial policies. We've updated our procurement policy. We've also put in place a five-year capital improvement plan. We have a facility fund that's for annual repairs and maintenance to ensure that all our buildings are being taken care of. We've put in an automated purchase card program. This includes rebates. Currently, we, for just, let's see, thirteen months, we've received back $11,200. That may not seem like large dollars, but we didn't get that in the past. And every dollar counts when we're, when we're going against what we're asking the taxpayers to fund. We also have enhanced our investment plan, and this was to help maximize interest income and to keep it more stable. We also have the detailed budget for all users, which is available to the public on the county website under the Finance tab. And we have centralized accounting under the Finance Department. We have some continued efforts in efficiency. One thing that Public Works has been working with the department heads on is to get items that are ready to be auctioned off and putting those through Purple Wave to get some funds back in to help offset those ad valorem taxes and assist with the capital equipment and building costs. And then we've also worked to improve our fleet management within Public Works and the Sheriff's Office, which are our two biggest departments with equipment and vehicles. The department heads have worked very hard on trying to increase our grant funding to help offset the ad valorem taxes anytime it's possible. And we have been working to consolidate several of our contracts to keep the best rates and by bundling those sources. Just a couple of budget facts, and sometimes people get a little bit confused because there's more than one taxing entity in the county. However, the county are the ones that send the bills, and the county are the ones that collect the bills. But they do distribute it back out to the city and the school district. So we are all separate taxing entities. The governing boards all set the actual taxes for those entities. We just work as the agency that pulls the funds in and then distributes them. The county adopts a balanced budget to provide the most flexibility and spending authority. It does not necessarily mean that they have the intent to spend all of those dollars. There are some funds that are not legally required to be budgeted. Capital improvement funds are one of those. The county has a one percent sales tax that's required to be shared with the cities in Gary County and a quarter cent sales tax for the 2006 hospital G O bond. Both are used to offset ad valorem tax needs. I did bring some data from 2024. And of that one percent general fund sales tax that we have to share with the cities, it was $6,712.64 that was collected. And of that $6,712.064, Gary County retained $3,096,593. The other funds were sent to Grand View Plaza, Junction City, and Milford, with Junction City receiving fifty point zero eight percent of that total 6.7 million. Grand View Plaza received 3.07 percent, and Milford was just under one percent with a point seven one percent. Now, in addition to those dollars that the, the county holds, Junction City also has their own sales tax that they receive. And Junction City, again, they also use sales tax to offset their ad valorem needs. And beyond the three, almost 3.4 million that the county had to share with them, they collected an additional $11,103,670. So they had 14.4 million available to help offset their ad valorem tax dollars, where we had $3,096,000. So both of those things and both entities help tremendously with decreasing that ad valorem tax needs. That information can be found on the KansasRevenue.gov website if anyone's interested in looking that up. Other revenue sources that are available to the county are motor vehicle taxes, earned interest on investments, federal and state aid, licenses, fees, and permits. And I'll just end the presentation with this because this is how we have been able to do all that we've done at the county, is by working as a team. So I would just like to say, a successful team is a group of many hands and one mind. Thank you, Kami. Appreciate all your comments on that. There are some other handouts out there, and I'll just briefly show them up on the screen. And, and if anybody's interested, they can always come into my office and pick them up at a later time. They're available up here for everyone that's here today. But Trish just gives you some statistics. Again, we had a constituent that was here last week, and he said one of the other places he had went and listened on their budget, they had these big fancy boards and presented this information. Well, we don't really have the space for the boards, but I did create these spreadsheets so that they were available if somebody wanted to pick up. So it just gives you some statistics on the 2026 budget. And then this one, it shows you the general fund revenues and where the money comes from. And then this last one is the general fund expenditures, and that shows you the categories of the expenses, the dollars amount, and what makes up the appropriations. And again, this is just the general fund because that's the fund that we levy. There's also an appropriation request in history for our agency funds that come in and ask for dollars. We also have a budget developmental worksheet. The Commissioners rely on this pretty heavily because it gives them all the information by department. It shows who they're, they have asking for appropriations. It shows the transfers that are being made. And then it shows some key funds at the bottom where transfers are made in from the general fund, so they have indirect ad valorem taxes. This second page, this is really what we use to develop our budget because it shows the revenue on the left side, and then it has your expenditures from the front page on the right side. And then it works through the budget, the value of a mill. It shows you what our needs are. And then it compares it to the revenue neutral rate. And it also gives you a, an example of an appraised value house, a $200,000 appraised value house, and how the change in the mill rate would affect a person's taxes. This document we talked about the other day. And so some people were wanting to know what made up the difference from 2025 to 2026 budget. And so I went through the information and I pulled that out. So these are just the, the categories that were affected to get us to that $1,127,554 proposed mill levy increase. This was the budget fact worksheet that I had talked about earlier. And then there's some information on the FIRE budget. That's a special district, so it's actually outside the general fund under the special districts. And we did talk about this, and the Commission did adjust this just a little bit. It's still over revenue neutral, but it is less than what was originally presented and what was sent out on the R and R notices. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you, Kami, for all your hard work in putting this together. Thank you for helping us with the budget process. I said it the other day, but this is probably one of the toughest years in my tenure that I've ever encountered. So, so I noticed there is, you have a sheet here with the 26 budget. They can go to garycounty.org and then use your finance button.
Yep. Yep. And it is expected because one of the, Commissioner Tremont did ask me when that would be available. She had a constituent ask about that, and it is due to the clerk on October 1st. So I would expect that we would have that out on the website at that same time. And then the split. That should all be basically the same time. Do we have them now at the charge nurse office too? We do not, but we could see about putting a little sleeve or laying it out on the table down there. More people down for that come in there, so that would be a good place to have it. Now, we have passed our budget, and the deputy clerk had come in and provided me copies from the extension office to sign their worksheets today. And we did double-check that, and the amount they have is that $370,000 that we adjusted their appropriation to. So it is ready to be signed if you guys want to approve signing their documentation. That's necessary for them, and the clerk will need to certify it. I'll just have to, hello, Chairman?
Got a motion and a second. All clear? Aye. So with that said, any comments, any questions for Kami and Asher here?
I would just comment that you guys, Public Works Administrator, dealing with the budgets that I do and processes are, are very clear, and Kami's assistance is very impressive. I personally thank her for all the help in doing this, and Commissioners' support through it as well.
Well said.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Travis, thank you for that.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it.
And that data, if anybody had to say.
Somebody needs to send that to Gary.
That, that data that I did collect is, is on the Department of Revenue website.
Oh, okay.
All that can access that.
Okay.
Value changes, values in general, county by county, upstate wide.
Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, we talk about this all the time. You just said the valuations. It's our job to do the taxes.
Yeah, those values were set, you know, June first. And we're still doing, well, we're done, but the budget happens now.
Yeah, people like, you know, people just try to say, well, we're the ones that, that set the mill levy, which in turn sets the value of your taxes. It doesn't matter what the valuation is on our house. Ultimately, it's, is the, the elected officials of each governing board that sets the taxes that cost you the money.
And that's established by the order in which they happen.
Yes.
And it does, right, the mill levy from actual dollars. Travis, you need to go.
Yeah, I got the kids.
Thank you.
Run, Travis. Thanks, Travis.
Thank you.
Well, with that, we'll move forward with Public Works' valuable report. Well, with that, we'll move forward with Public Works' valuable report.
Good evening, Commission. Jeremy Myers, Public Works Administrator. Kayla Ross, Administrative Service Manager, with me again this evening. First thing we have is Sheriff's Office Willow Lock Proposal. We received a proposal for a repair of two detention doors and five R and R brink fifty-twenty locks through Willow. Cost is seven thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Would recommend commission approval through Facilities Fund for that.
So I'll second.
Then move and second to take Chairman's recommendation. All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, we'll add, we do have a agreement with Willow that does save ten percent on parts that we enter annually with them, but this, those locks are just expensive repairs, unfortunately, so.
Uh, do we need to authorize you to sign that or who signs that?
Uh, I can sign that, yeah, if you want to get approval for that.
You want to input that in your motion?
I'll input that if I appreciate it.
I'll second.
Uh, next I have Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Fund. I received an email from KDOT on nine-five advising Gary County was not selected for physical year 2026 for the bridge on Lower McDowell Creek Road. Uh, KDOT received eighty-five applications for a total of a hundred and five million in construction costs. And they were able to award twenty million to eleven different projects in that program. So that kind of gives you an idea of the competition we're up against with that. But we will continue to apply for that in the future in hopes of getting selected. Uh, next is the off-system bridge program for McNeil Road. Uh, Gary County was selected for the off-system bridge funding for physical year 2027. Uh, KDOT received seventy-eight application requesting assistance uh, for a total of eighty-four point three million construction cost. And KDOT was able to award twenty point five million to sixteen projects in that program. Um, our maximum award amount for this one is eight hundred thousand for construction and inspection uh, performed under the contract. And Gary County is responsible for any costs over that awarded amount and as well as design, right away acquisition, and utility relocation. Uh, when we submitted that, we did request seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. So I'm fairly confident we can come in underneath with those construction and inspection costs on that. Um, let's see. Uh, talking with Chad with Cal Valley, with Cal Valley Engineering. Uh, he advised that there's currently an open contract with Cal Valley Engineering for performing survey, design, and geotech from back in, back on May tenth of two thousand and seven, for thirty-four thousand, twenty-seven dollars. And that was when Mr. Cox was still the administrator here with Gary County. Um, of that, they did enough work to invoice for eight thousand, thirty-six dollars. So technically, there is still an open contract for twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars for that project. So some of the work has been done on that already. So I think I will visit with them a little bit more. I know two thousand and seven to two thousand and twenty, twenty-five, it's a long period, you know, and to see how that might shake out in today's time, where those numbers might still be, if they're somewhat accurate, accurate, the whole two, or what it is, so. Uh, so with that, I would recommend commission approval to allow me to fill out, uh, the request for construction project thirteen oh-two form and return that to KDOT. And that must be returned prior to October tenth, twenty twenty-five.
So I'll second.
Then move and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, next is KDOT Innovation Technologies Program. This kind of goes a little bit with what Tammy was showing a little bit, how we're looking for ways to find funding for some projects and things like that. Through this program, we can apply for funding to assist with development of a pavement management system for Gary County. Uh, through that, they would assess all roads and give them a pavement condition index rating. And that would be used to prioritize repairs as well as future, future capital project planning. Uh, if awarded, it would require a twenty-five percent match from the county with additional, and with additional match dollars, uh, it would receive additional consideration. Uh, we have spoken with Finance a bit about this. And with, and if commission is in support, we would continue to discuss and bring back to commission for approval to apply, which that would be due by November thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. So if you, if commission feels that that's something they'd want to kind of look after, I think it would be worth looking into myself.
Sure.
No, I need a motion for that now. I think when I bring it back at the final time, just wanted you guys to be aware of what we're looking at and, you know, make sure that you have some sort of support. If not, we wouldn't waste our time, not waste our time to keep digging and looking into it. Uh, I'll let Kayla kind of talk about this next one as she's kind of been the power of overseeing it.
Um, as I mentioned last week, we did have our demo with the STAR program for an noxious feed department. Um, the demo went well and the program seemed easy to use and understand. We received a proposal that we would like to ask for commission's approval today on. The proposal, which you should have gotten fully, um, is broken out for purchasing the program itself, the bookkeeping module, and the, and a setup fee, which all are one-time fees totaling the five thousand, three hundred dollar amount. Um, annual fee for this program is six hundred dollars. The programmer stated that conversion of our data would be fairly easy to do and is confident we can start using this program by January first of twenty twenty-six. And we analyzed our budget for the rest of twenty twenty-five and felt comfortable that we can incur that five thousand, three hundred dollars on this year's budget. So that way we can get everything established and ready to start, um, this program in the new year. The annual fee of six hundred dollars wouldn't then be charged until twenty twenty-seven, which we can budget for appropriately in twenty twenty-six. We did speak with Finance Director and she didn't have any issues if we could cover the costs, which we believe we can. So we would like to ask for commission's approval on purchasing the STAR program for noxious feed, since our current program is no longer being supported.
Yeah, I guess we could replace that.
Yeah.
I make a motion as we go forward with that.
I'll second.
Then move and second to convert over to the STAR programing for five thousand, three hundred dollars with an annual fee of six hundred dollars. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion, Karen.
Do you?
Yes, thank you. Uh, next we have Extension Office retaining wall damage. Damage occurred to the south end of the retaining wall that is located on the west side of the Extension Office building. Uh, this was struck by the janitorial contractor for the Extension Office. Uh, we did receive a repair estimate from the contractor who is currently doing that courthouse project up there for eighteen hundred dollars. We've been in contact with the individual involved and they have stated that they're going to go ahead and pay for this instead of covering it through their insurance. So we're just waiting on them to come down and make payment and then we'll get those repairs made. Now, twenty twenty-five landfill monitoring wells testing quote requested. We have sent out requests for quotes to three companies for this service as part of the annual testing required by KDHE. Uh, as of today, we've received two back, but they are not due till October third. So we'll wait till that date and see if we get a third and then make a recommendation then. Uh, Riley County, Gary County snow removal agreement. County Council provided me with a draft agreement for Gary County to remove the snow on Riley County's portion of Bowler Road in exchange for Riley County removing snow on McDowell Creek Road north of the Interstate seventy. I've sent this over to Riley County for review and commission's signature, should they agree with the agreement provider. So Betsy did an excellent job drafting that up for us. We'll see how they come back. So I think it looks pretty good myself.
Makes sense.
Yeah, it really does.
And I don't think there'll be a problem with that.
No, speaking with Alvin over there, he, he thought it would make a lot of sense to do so as well. So he's got to go through his proper channels and chains. And I anticipate we'll see it come back here pretty soon. Uh, just a little update on public works personnel. Uh, we did make a conditional offer for the facilities manager assistant administrator position, and it was accepted. So I think there'll be a good fit for it and they have a tentative start date of October first. Uh, additionally, the current seasonal employee for building maintenance submitted a letter of interest uh, for the equipment operator trainee position. And once the interview was done, we talked about it and selected him. So, uh, he will transition over to Public Works and Roden Bridge on nine twenty-seven of twenty twenty-five. And that would put the Public Works Roden Bridge Department fully staffed.
That's great. And the first one was a facilities?
Yes, facilities assistant administrator position, which would have been the old position for me before I, yeah, so. Uh, yeah, that will fill us up for the time being, uh, aside from the three frozen positions that we still have for the rest of twenty-five and then for twenty twenty-six. Things are looking pretty good there. That'll be a lot of help and especially as we get into these winter months. So we've got a couple guys that are just completing getting their CDLs. So we'll get them trained up and able to run some plow trucks and stuff too. Uh, CIP deposits. We were finally given approval from KCAM to take our previous shop truck that caught fire last year uh, to be taken for scrap metal. They finally deemed that they wouldn't get any money out of it, putting it up for auction themselves. So they turned it over to us and we received six hundred dollars. And this money was deposited, deposited back to the CIP fund as the CIP fund funded our replacement shop truck. Finance Director was made aware and conferred with that deposit. Put a little bit back where you guys graciously give us money. Uh, Old City Bridge update. As of the end of today, nine fifteen, crews were a little bit better than halfway done with replacing those stringers and bridge planks on that. So we're hopeful the weather will continue to stay good so we can keep moving along. I do see there's some rain in the forecast this week, but hopefully not a whole lot and they can keep plugging away on that. Um, I have had a few county residents inquire about the old bridge planks and stringers. So I want to talk to commission about that. I'd recommend that the county would accept five dollars apiece for those, see on a first come, first served basis. Um, we have a lot of them down at the landfill, old ones, that we're going to have to dispose of at a cost to the county here at some point. And these would just add to that pile, so.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I think commission's okay with that. I'll get ahold of the people that have contacted me, let them know, hey, five dollars apiece.
What are you going to do?
I have no idea. Maybe build a bridge.
Use them for landscaping.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, they last a long time. They just have served their purpose on that bridge and won't
Yep.
no longer stay there, so. Uh, next is the number fifty-six boom mower accident. An accident occurred with number six, fifty-six boom mower where the parking brake had failed. Uh, after the employee parked it, he was driving away from the area and looked in the rearview mirror and off it was rolling. So, uh, it ended up rolling off of the bank. It stayed on its wheels but went into some trees and did some damage to the boom mower portion of it as well as, uh, the transmission on the tractor started leaking from that ordeal. So, uh, we've been talking with KCAM and Prairieland Partners over in Abilene, working on some estimates and kind of see where that ends up. But we'll advise commission once we get some final numbers on that. And lastly, HHW Recycling opened nine thirteen, twenty twenty-five, uh, last Saturday, Saturday being the second Saturday of the month. HHW is seen around five customers, eighteen on the recycling side, and twenty at the landfill.
I was at the landfill.
Yep. You were at the landfill? All right.
You were one of the twenty, I was one of the twenty.
I was kicking his frame in the wild there.
But it's good that they're still utilizing that Saturday.
There was like more people there when we were dumping.
Yeah, and it's a popular site for sure, so. And with that, I think that's all we have. Commission, have anything for us?
I don't.
Okay. Feel free to reach out if you do, you know how to get ahold of us.
I'm excited for your new software. I think that'll be pretty good.
Yeah, yeah.
And the lady who did the demo with, she is the programmer, so. Um, unlike our current programmer, we have to call and wait around for someone who knows something about the program. She built the thing, so, um, if there's any issues, yeah, we just call her and she seems like she'll get it right. You know, she, on their website, it's down towards like Oklahoma.
Quarter.
It's here in Kansas.
Yeah.
Oh, good. It's not a very big town. I think we looked up the population and was like, oh, we know a program like that coming out of there.
Nice. But she said after COVID, like all the training, she's done virtually. And we're at her disposal anytime we need. So I think it'll be a lot better process for us and we can track things a little bit better, so we're excited, yeah.
Definitely.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Betsy, anything for us?
No.
All right. Thankfully not. Commission, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yep. Want to say first?
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Yes.
Wow, we're ahead of schedule. Did you get agreement on your road viewer?
All three road viewers, uh, for their van have said yes.
All right.
I think so. They're all so agreeable and discerning.
Good.
And, um, we're going to talk about the whites later in the meeting, but I thought we're going to do them yet in September for their hearing. It'd be the honor road, playing it out. It has to be, uh, in the clerk's office for at least twenty days for inspection. And then you have to publish it twice. And then you have to have the period within twenty days of the last publication. So I thought if we could do that, we'd have to hope that before it's not cold.
The Bergfield?
Yeah.
Darren, do you?
Tracy, how come this voucher that was for four twenty-eight, we're just getting in there? And road viewers, you know, sixty dollars. I don't know.
How many were?
But roving is, it's a pay of twenty-eight.
That's when, oh, we can remember, that's when they did it. And then I just was kind of, well, because we weren't going to pay and then we decided and then we kind of forgot about it.
Yeah, I thought we.
And then we got another bill.
Yeah.
If we hadn't had, you know, discussion about it, wouldn't it probably stuck out online?
Well, I think we kind of forgot it after we, we forgot about it after we talked about it. And so then we got another bill and it reminded us.
Um, I'll bring this up before Raquel comes in. For the CBB Visitors Guide, you know, that they put out every year.
Yeah.
Um, the county always have a full-page ad. The Commissioner's, whatever. Fourteen hundred and ninety-five dollars for a full-page ad. So Adam sent me an, uh, email and asked if you guys want to do it again. And this is what you have this year. And I asked Tammy about it and it's in your budget for advertising.
They brought in those books down here to the building yet? I actually.
Um, well, they're working on the twenty twenty-six one.
Yeah, we did have some twenty-five and trying to put them down there. Now, I don't know if we have any more on.
There's plenty that, and at the CBB, so.
Oh, is there?
If there needs to be, we can run over here. We can tell, we can tell our, to bring some more over today.
Yeah, that information always was, um, Yeah, that information always was um good um when we put it inside the office and people always were picking up.
I mean, if you want to change, change those sometimes every
Yeah.
If you want to change the pictures, I think they can do that.
That's what I was curious about. Do we need to update it?
Because I thought you changed it last year or two years ago. Well, I don't know. What is that picture? Gear or something? What is that then? Doesn't necessarily
Yeah, that doesn't even really say what that, I don't know what that is. I don't remember that being in. Oh, it's an airplane um
Yep, engine.
thing, but that doesn't look very good there because you can't really tell what it is. So that definitely needs to be
I thought it was the um
Yeah, we can tell Raquel.
Something at the fair looking down.
Oh, yeah. No, I think that's probably from the fly-in.
Yeah.
But no, that's not a
Can't tell what it is.
There's a really pretty one that they had in the um uh pretty, it was the, the sunset um at the lake. That would look really pretty there. But when she comes in, we can probably tell her to change that.
Well, would there be any pictures from the uh, oh, the balloons?
Oh, yeah, that would be good too.
Is another thing back to
Or get a side picture of an airplane and not the engine.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that doesn't
Man, it's like
I don't remember that would be in there last year.
Well, I, yeah, I neither.
It was a, yeah.
And I don't know if he changed it. I don't get that for something. Because he's the, he's the one that sent that to me, so.
Yeah, I think he put that in there because that wasn't there last year.
I don't remember seeing that.
I would have been wearing an airplane. Hmm. Yeah.
All right, well, we'll discuss that when she comes in. Commissioner, do an update. And your proclamation.
Did you bring it?
I did bring it.
Boy.
I would have forgotten. I'm so glad that you were going to be. Um, so uh Ponte Mino Health asked us to do this a couple weeks ago and I forgot it last time, so. Um, September is recovery month proclamation, and so I will read what they have sent. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and overall wellness and prevention works. Treatment is effective and people can and do recover from substance abuse and mental health disorders. And whereas it is critical to educate our policymakers, friends and family members, healthcare providers and business businesses that substance use, substance use and mental disorders are treatable and that people should seek assistance for these conditions with the same urgency as they would with any other health condition. And whereas almost forty eight, forty eight point five million Americans had a past year substance use disorder, yet only fifteen point six sixteen, fifteen point six percent of them received treatment. And overdose deaths have more than tripled since nineteen ninety, taking a toll on the lives of a hundred and five thousand in twenty twenty three. And whereas the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office and National Drug Control Policy and Ponte Mino Health Services observe recovery month as to ways of awareness and understanding of recovery from substance abuse and mental health disorders. Therefore, Gary County does hereby proclaim September twenty twenty five as recovery month in Gary County and calls upon its citizens, government agencies and public, private institutions, businesses and schools to recognize the importance of recovery and to commit to our community to increasing awareness and understanding of substance use and mental disorders and the need for appropriate accessible services for all people.
Hmm.
All right, I will sign.
So does I hear a motion to adopt that resolution?
I so
Or proclamation?
I so moved. Second.
Been moving and signing to um adopt the proclamation for Ponte Mino Health Recovery Month of, month of September. I'll try to decide.
Aye.
All right.
I've got another question on the vouchers um on these service awards that we pay out. It would seem like they all should stay in the same ballpark because one to me is not necessarily more important than the other. But you know, they're all probably averaging probably uh probably around thirty-five dollars. But we've got one for a hundred and thirty-seven forty and
Why, I didn't hear what it was.
It's because of the length of time. The more time you have, the, the gift or whatever is a little more expensive.
Oh, yeah.
I should take that into consideration when I was getting mine.
Wow. With the knife, is that what that was?
What is that?
Oh, no.
So I'll send that proclamation to Dewey, it's what on JC Post and then do you want it on the county's website?
Go ahead.
Do you want to put it on the county's website also?
Um, yeah, we can do that. And then um if you could email it to me so I can email it to them, then we have it, yeah.
Commissioner Ash will be recovered from two ballgames this weekend. She hasn't
I mean, I need to go to Ponte.
Um, so I also had a um a childcare um coalition meeting um this week. And they are, like I told you before, we got a grant, us and Dickinson County got a joint grant uh to help with different things. And one of them is um like a pilot uh for extended hours for like overnight or extended hours, like uh swing shift for people. And so that's getting ready to start, um which I'm excited about because I think that'll help, you know, with some of the
For both counties?
Uh, yeah, for both counties. And then um they're also uh looking at different uh curriculum to help um uh supplement some of the curriculum that some of the uh um kids that have, you know, the preschool age kids, to be able to help them with that too. So, yeah, I thought, I thought that was pretty good.
Is there any tie in with the early childhood development?
Well, they're only adding one, okay, so the early childhood that they're getting ready to open next year, um it, they're only adding an additional class. So they're not going to be able to, you know, there's not going to be that many more. It's just going to be all consolidated in that building. So I know everybody was a little concerned about, oh, it's going to take all of the daycare, but they're only going to be open a specific amount of hours. They're not going to do, you know, they're going to be closed when the school is closed. And so, you know, those daycares are needed.
And they can't handle that volume?
No, that, yeah, there's going to be way more three and four-year-olds than there are slots there, so. Um, and then I went, I attended the nine eleven ceremony, both on Fort Riley and here in Truxton City, and both of them were very well done. Um, always pretty uh emotional when, you know, going there and making, you know, thinking about that day and how it changed everything. And then I attended the uh grand opening ribbon cutting for Celestial Suites, the new bakery. And I'm telling you right now, that is some good stuff. They have um their cinnamon rolls are to die for and their, their pecan cheesecake.
Oh.
Definitely try that. Yeah. So that's all I have.
Um, I just had a um uh employee task um task force meeting and they talked about the golf tournament on October fourth and they were still needing people to sign up um for some slots. And I think there was an email today and they just had one open um slots. I think they're getting that filled up. Um, they talked about um uh training day. I think they've got everything um all organized and ready to go. They've got um good speaker um on that day. And um then they talked about the um drive, defensive driving course. I didn't think she mentioned how many um had completed the course, but you know, they had some uh in person and they liked
Thirty-four in person?
Yeah, I think thirty-four, yeah.
That's good.
So, yeah.
And, and keep in mind that it's not, it's on a three-year rotation, so not everybody, not all employees are going to take it in one year.
Right, yes, right. And then um otherwise, that's really all I had. I did um go to Haze this week and go on down to Little Cross. I had some friends that are retiring after a number of years, so I went down to their um retirement reception. They've got twenty-six treasures going out this year, so that's a significant amount, a quarter of the treasures, yeah. It was interesting because there, yeah, there was um, there was probably seven or eight that um are first termers. So, you know, usually treasures stick around for a long time, so um it was kind of um eye-opening that, you know, some of the, some of the younger ones um just um try it and don't like it, so. But, yes, that was nice.
Well, it's probably not an easy job.
Yeah, yeah. Then a couple of them, the other gal I went to, she was um thirty-eight years. And then I, I think Nancy's, which hers is today, but I got a visit with her and stuff, or hers is this Friday, but I wasn't going to go clear out to Siblet, Kansas. I had a doctor's appointment, so. Um, anyway, but I, yeah, I think Nancy was over fifty years or right thereof, yeah, so, yeah, yeah. And that's really all I had.
Okay. Um, the nine eleven ceremony was really good and, and, you know, Ronald Larson started that. And, but it was so good to see all the dress blues, the honor guards, I mean, just really well done. And I, you know, quite frankly, I think there was a really good turnout.
Yeah, I thought so too. I thought Sheriff Beck did a great job.
Sheriff did a great job. Um, so, yeah, I, I always liked that. Um, oh, got to go to the Opera House the other night to, to see
Wasn't it good?
Gosh.
It was good, yeah.
Um, it just floors me, the talent we have in our community.
Yeah.
And um, and a lot of these people you know.
Yes.
And you just don't realize.
Yeah.
I was afraid. I took Addison and I thought maybe the three hours was going to be a little long for her to lose her interest, but um she hung in there and I enjoyed it as well and all that. But that was, I was really impressed. It was very good.
I said that um Saturday night that we went, that that was the largest turnout they had up to that point. And it was, it was cool. But no, hats off to Ellie Dillon and everybody that worked on that. I just wish more people could go to stuff like that.
Yeah.
And then I guess the last thing is, I had the opportunity to talk to all three of our legislators and ask them about our working launch. And between the three of them that came up with, and we might get noted this reason, um, December eighth, that works forever.
Isn't it great? That reminds me, at the, at our childcare coalition, there was um, uh, one, Julia from um Riley County um Health Department. And, you know, she talked about how they sent um letters asking for additional monies because they're not being, you know, supplemented to cover the costs. And, and, you know, and I told her, I said, I totally understand, you know, you guys have said that that's between you and the state, you know, that you, you know, and I said, it just really irritates me that, that, that just yet another unfunded mandate that, that they're supposed to be helping with and that I feel that, you know, and I told them, I said, I feel that, oh, Riley County, or Riley County, us and, and Dickinson County really need to get on our local legislators and let them know that this is happening because they said, Riley County said that, you know, if they're not going to help, if the state's not going to supplement that, that they, they are probably, their, the contract is over in the middle of uh of the year next year, probably July one. So I don't know what's going to happen after that, so.
So they're still going to be short.
So I did mention it to um Representative Chauncey about it.
Betsy, did you have anything that, sure, anything new with the tax sale?
Sure, um, we have a hearing last week, um, and some answering defendants did appear and took judgment against those answering defendants. Um, I guess kind of a, a what, just a housekeeping question I have for you guys was we're going to have it on the Saturday in the morning. Um, most banks, not many banks in Truxton City are open anymore on Saturdays. Um, especially for walk-ins, some of them have to drive through. So I'm fine with saying we're going to take personal checks and cash the day of the sale. Somebody came in today and asked me, well, if I wanted to do a certified check, would you wait until Monday? I mean, I, I, I guess my feeling on it is that we'll take personal checks and we won't make a way for a certified check. I want doing personal checks and cash the day of the sale and shutting it down. But if you think you'd like to give people the opportunity to go to the bank and close it out the next day, it would be in Monday, so.
I would say it would never be easier for our staff.
Well, if you take a personal check on Saturday, it's not going to go through until Monday. You're not going to know if it's any good till Monday anyway.
Right, and generally, you know, like you have to have the hearing to confirm the sale and the deed doesn't get filed right away. Um, because you have to have your court hearing um to confirm the sale. Um, we've taken personal checks. I've checked back on the old instructions we did in the past.
Yeah.
Um, but this particular taxpayer said I'm really interested, but I thought I would pay by certified check and I said, well, that's a good point, the medical deal, and so, because a lot of towns we did, we had it in the morning and then did by closing business so they could go to the bank and yeah, could have been on it. So I don't care really either way.
Well, it falls through. They've just been, falls through.
It may be the same thing as if they were a badge.
Right, exactly.
You know, so I mean, yeah, I guess, I mean, maybe it's not going to
I give them the benefit of the doubt.
So let me bring a personal, a certified check over till like noon on
Yeah, put it on, put it on, on.
Okay. Because I need to write out the instructions for everybody so they can do that.
Sure.
Um, I'm also going to file a motion to find some of the properties that are together, that it makes sense that they'd be sold as a single parcel. So the CLAs will decrease. So if there's three locks right in a row, it would make more sense to sell them together. I'm going to combine those. I've got a little bit of Mr. Lindgren's thing about that.
Like, where were we in that number, was?
There were a hundred and forty-four to start. I think we just collected more money today. I think we're probably a little bit over a hundred still. But I think we're getting closer to the predictions coming through.
Do you mind for the record to say November first, Thursday?
It's going to start at ten o'clock at the Ford Senior Center. Um, the other thing was uh we talked about trying to do, uh, it was mentioned, somebody had mentioned if we wanted to do a picture of each parcel um and then have it, you know, when they were going through selling that parcel, it would be on a screen. I think that's a real nice idea. Uh, I think we could run into some trouble. A, look, I don't have the time or the experience to do that. And B, what if you look the wrong picture up? Um,
Yep.
I, I think it should be their responsibility of, you know, come into that to know after what they're bidding on.
Yeah, if they're that interested, they're going to check out.
Maybe we had twenty or thirty, maybe I could see, but we have over a hundred and I just Maybe, yeah, twenty or thirty, maybe I could see, but we have over a hundred, and I just, I don't feel that that's.
I mean, it's a great idea.
Yeah, so, and I've never been to a tax sale, and I, I, well, we have a list of how much each, the, the monies that they owe the city, well, we have a list of that.
So, when I get our final list together, I am wanting to email it all to the city and the codes department to see if they will do that, um. We're under no obligation to do that, copy out, enter, uh, prevails, whatever you buy in property, um, it's the buyer's responsibility to do their homework, um, and I think that would be a nice thing, that we can provide to people at the sale, and if the cities wanted to do that, um, I would like to have that list available, um, there's also properties in Brandy Plaza, um, I don't know, uh, I was gonna send their city quarter calls out, a list to see.
Well, and I'd also like to maybe set up a table, and I don't know if the city would want to do this, but I would be willing to, you know, to have that list of that, of the monies that, that they owe the cities, but then also talk about our prepared radicalization program, and, you know, to give them information on that.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah. So do we have a flyer, flyer or a brochure?
They're, well, I think they'll have it, they're having their hearing tomorrow, um, and then hopefully it'll all get approved, and then we can at least have something to give them, to send it, you know, to where they could go to the city and apply for them, so.
Yeah, letting them know the process.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Betsy. Well, now we're running all early, but Raquel, are you ready?
I'm ready if you guys are. It's so weird to pull up the next, like, no card out, out in the street, so. Um, Raquel Singo, CBB Director, um, a couple things, the first one to start off on, I guess we could talk about the beautification, um, grant that we are, we've discussed at our meeting, our CBB meeting, um, so it's a beautification grant that we talked about to offer the hoteliers, um, in preparation for the World Cup, and, uh, we talked about having the hotelier, uh, offering it to up to ten hoteliers, uh, having them spend up to, well, they can spend whatever they want, but we would match, uh, up to two thousand dollars for a four thousand dollar spend on any exterior beautification for their property. And so basically, if I'm Hotel ABC, and I spend four thousand dollars on a new sign, or landscaping, or painting, or something to make the outside of my building look more appealing, then the CBB would then reimburse up to two thousand dollars of that four. And again, that's in preparation for the World Cup, so we would have to word it somehow so that, like, you don't do new landscaping in December, you know, it would be the, the first game in Kansas City, I wanna say is like the middle of June, around the seventeenth, so it would be somewhere so that it's, it's closer to the time of when we can potentially get the tourism here.
So, my question is, do you, they submit an application for the grant.
Mm-hmm.
You go out and, and they show you what they want to do. I guess my fear is, and I'm not opposed to it, but are they really gonna do what they're proposing?
Well, I would, I would think that we would reimburse after it's already done.
Yeah, they have to show what they've done, and, and.
So, yeah, so they could say, hey, we're gonna put all new bushes, let's say, out in the mediums of the parking lot, let's say, um, but then myself, or somebody on, in the chamber, somebody, uh, somebody, one of the commissioners, whoever, would go and say, yep, this is, this was done, and it would, it would have to be, I would assume, I'm thinking, you know, professionally done, or something where they could give us documentation that, you know, Blueville Nursery came out to do it, and then it would be paid, or, I don't know, compensated, uh-huh, reimbursed after the fact.
Yeah, I just think that, and it was something I brought up at the meeting, just to see what they thought, because, you know, there's some, I think we give them a little bit of incentive to, you know, beautify, and, and these monies are monies that are collected by the hoteliers, and, you know, and so, um, and we just, you know, capped it at, at twenty thousand, so up to.
To two thousand.
Yeah, I know, but, but ten.
Oh, I was like, not twenty.
No, 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 but, I mean, so up to ten, that gives the two thousand, it could be more if there's, you know, if somebody always spends a thousand, then they only get five hundred, and so, um, you know, so.
Yeah, so like, another example would be the Super Eight got bought out, and now they are a Red Lion. The sign that's off the I-70 has a big black tarp or whatever over it, so if they would want to get a new sign made, and then whatever, I don't know, I'm sure signs are expensive, but whatever it costs, we would reimburse up to two thousand dollars if they use that grant money for the sign. Does that make sense?
Oh, no, I'm fine.
Yeah, it might just incentivize some of them to, to do something.
Along with that, what, who's in charge of the parking lot in front of the convention center?
So, there was a discussion recently with Tepin, the GM there, and I connected him with Kim Zimmerman, I think is the city manager, so they just had a meeting actually on Friday, maybe it was Thursday, Thursday or Friday, and it's the city, so I did get an email, I was looped in on the email, um, of how they mapped out the whole property, sorry, I'm really cold sitting here, it's like shivery a little bit. And then I, I have ice water, so, um, anyhow, uh, so it, it, it is city-owned, and it's the, the parking lot that just surrounds the front and the back and the side of the convention center.
That's what I thought.
So, yeah, because I think the new ownership at the Sinesta there, they've talked about fixing the, the parking lot around the hotel itself, because there's big potholes and all that stuff, and so I think the, the connection is so that they could, essentially the city, and then them could use the same contractor to do it all at the same time.
So back to the grant.
Yes.
You need our blessing.
Yes, please.
I make a motion that we move forward with the beautification grants. I'll second.
And moving second, and on favor, say aye.
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 What was your question, were you just asking, you wanted to know who, who cared to maintain it?
I, I always thought, yeah, I always thought it was the cities.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it is.
I mean, when, when the, the original setup was, we shared the cost with the city for the convention center, but the city is in charge of the parking lot.
And I can send, send you guys that email if you wanna see the aerial shot of, of how they divided it up.
That's.
I have it, if you, if you ever need it.
If they're gonna work it out, that's fine.
Yeah, and like I said, they just had a meeting, so.
Okay.
Um, so the next thing was the, there's a, there's an event that, or a, a, a show, or not a show, but yeah, I guess an event that's happening in Chicago on October the eighth, it's a one-day, um, conference, and it's relatively inexpensive for the registration itself, for two people to attend, it's five hundred dollars. Uh, flights are approximately three hundred and seventy-two dollars for round trip, round trip tickets. Um, we're budgeting about a hundred dollars for, like, Uber, for it to and from the airport to the hotel. Hotel cost is fifteen hundred, and then meals based on, you know, allocation, or, or whatever our budget meal, yeah. Um, it's about two hundred dollars, total cost would be twenty-six hundred and seventy-two dollars, um, and it, I, I put on here, you know, the, the advantages that we would get from going to this, I, I know, I, you guys did approve for me to go to T-Bex in Wichita, which is from the first through the fourth. Um, I, I, I wanna say that this'll be a good, um, event for, I was thinking me and Adam going together, for us to go, and then just kind of, you know, get a feel for, um, you know, hi- his travel. This would be, he just did the, the state fair, but this would be like a first out-of-state travel for, for him as the marketing person, so, um, i- it's, it's an event that the CBB has never been to, but again, I, I like that it's a kind of short one-day, or, um, it would be two, two nights in a hotel for the travel day, and then the day of the event, so I don't know if that's something that you guys would feel comfortable with us going to, or, um, if not, then, again, I understand, I just wanted to bring it up.
And like I said, you know, I'm not, I can't make the decision on my own, and that's why I wanted to bring it here. I, I, I just, I think that, um, we can find in marketing, um, I guess it's like a class, pretty much, is what it is, it's going over some marketing stuff, but I think we can do it closer and, and a little less expensive than a day.
Are there other, um, opportunities, or is this a, I mean, is, is this widely attended by?
Yeah, I mean, it's, um, again, I've never attended it, so just kind of punching in some, or getting some information, um, it, it's nationally attended, so there's people from, from all over the US that go to it, so it's, it's not, it's not regional the way some of the other events are, um, and, you know, a lot of these, I feel like we, we don't, we won't know exactly what it is until we actually attend, um. So again, I just, I figured, because it's a, it's a short one, it's just a one-day thing, and it's not like three or four days, which a lot of them are, that it might be a good kind of get-your-feet-wet thing for, for Adam.
It does seem like a, a lot really for, for one day, and some of the experiences that you get from attending the conferences, collaborating with other people, and you lose that, um, by not, you know, having, you know, just basically going, so you wonder, um, you know, really how much benefit you could get besides the material, the learning material itself, but that's where I would have a problem, I guess, with it, in, in that sense, is, um, it, it's not, uh, an astronomical amount, but it is for, for one day, you know, twenty-six.
Yeah, and I mean, and this, yeah, and this cost is, is for two of us to attend, so, again, you know, just, I don't, I just wanted to, to ask about.
I guess my thought is, you know, you brought up the word regional, um, I don't know, but I think we get more bang for our buck for regional stuff, um.
And we are going to TAC to Tourism Conference also in October, that's here in Manhattan.
Right.
So, we, we kinda have the, the bookends with T-Bex being in Wichita, which is regional, and then Tourism Conference being in.
I guess my point is with you, well, you and your staff being relatively new, um, I, I think we need to go with baby steps.
Okay.
On some of this, and not full-blown, I don't know.
A lot of them are for, um, anything that you are able to enrich your position in doing, all that stuff, I, I kind of agree with Keith as well, that, um, you know, if you're more versed in, you know, because we, you, you do learn, you know, what's, you know, where to go, and what, and, and all that stuff, and I, you know, I, I, I kind of think it's a lot too for not knowing exactly what it is, you know, I mean, if it's, you came in here and said, you know, we've attended it every year, and, boy, you know, there's so much material, we learned so much, then, you know, it's, it's different, like I said, I, I, I think that you should attend and learn and do all those things that make your job easier and educate you more, but I just have a hesitant.
My question, just thinking what you were saying, do, do some of these put out a, kind of a overview video of the conference itself, is, I mean, you know what I'm trying to say?
So, I, Raquel and I have talked about these things, 'cause I, I would like for them to put what they wanna go to, and then have the flyer and the information with it, and what we feel that, how it will be beneficial to, to, um, Gary County, but then also after that, um, I, uh, uh, we talked about, um, her reaching out to other CBBs to, for act, after-action reports, and what they report on, to see it, you know, what the benefit is to our, our employees in, in Gary County.
Yeah, and.
We're working on that.
Yeah, and, um, you know, I, I feel like in the last couple of conferences or events or whatever that, that I've attended, I tried to do that, like, give you guys a, a rundown of, hey, this is what we talked about, this is what I really picked up on, you know, like the SO one about the, about the, um, uh, importance of the, uh, kids' sports or, or whatnot, you know, um, so, yeah, and it is, and I did, um, actually, I, I, I feel like I had already started implementing that, but I did speak with Marcia from, um, Manhattan, and she said, you know, yeah, that'd be, that's one of the tips or whatnot that she gave me about, you know, it, it'd be good to report.
On a form, you know, I actually report to, that, you know, she can return in to us.
So I take it it's a no for this, right, I could?
I'm not, I'm not comfortable with it, I'd rather wait another, um, even a year, or year, or, you know, if you have more feedback from other, um, of your other, uh, CBB people that said, yeah, you've gotta go, you know, you're missing out if you don't, you know, if you don't know, I, I mean, on the other hand, you know, you need to find out stuff on your own, but I, I do think it's a little pricey for one day, and then.
I just wondered whether, you know, some of them, whether they livestream the conference.
Um, I don't think a lot of them do that, because they.
Then they wouldn't sell a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
And nobody would go.
Yeah, they, we'd all just, yeah, kind of, you know, do it from the office.
And that takes, takes away from networking.
Right, okay.
Okay.
So, um, I'll just, I have a little rundown of my month, um, and whatever, monthly report. So, we have been working on the visitor guide still, um, we did get a quote today, um, but from, we used to get our visitor guide printed in Denver, um, and we got a quote from K-State, which is who we got last year, who printed our stuff, um, we did get a quote from Denver, but then after we got it, I noticed that there, it was, I don't know, you guys have seen the activity book or the coloring book that we have, so it was based on that, which is only four colors. Obviously, our visitor guide has more than four colors, so, um, we'll go ahead and, uh, send an email back to the lady and say, hey, it, it's not an activity book, this is for our actual visitor guide, which they've, um, they've printed in the past, that's the one that, um, used to, they used to go do like the press check or whatnot while they were printing it, when they would go to the, to the Denver outdoor show or whatnot. So, um, so, yeah, just, so we have two more quotes that we're waiting on. Adam had mentioned at one point that, um, Honor Screen Printing was interested in doing it, but we went over there to pick up some stuff on Friday, and he, that's more, that's out of their scope of really what they do, so he, he's, you know, he would love the business, but it's just not, it's not a, he, out of their comfort level, or, I don't know what the right word is. he, out of their comfort level or I don't know what the right word is, but.
Adam sent me the ad that we have, that the county has, and the pictures have it.
Okay.
But they had a couple of questions about pictures.
Sure.
There's one of the pictures uh, put on here, change it.
Okay.
Um, it's one with the propeller on the front end of an engine.
Yeah, I know. You can't even tell what it is. I don't know if he, if Adam changed it, cause I don't think it was like that last year.
We can look at what at what was before, but yeah, I'm, and Mandy's been kind of our rock star with with creating ads and stuff, so.
That pretty picture that you showed me today with the sunset and the, on the lake, that would look really pretty on there.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, we can, you just let me know which one you guys want to change or whatnot and we can.
We have it on there.
Okay.
I marked it.
So can I have that?
Yeah.
Well, then we'll, then I'll go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead with it, with that cha- that one changed uh, picture.
For the price of fourteen.
Oh, I see.
To do the uh, ad.
The ad, okay.
I'll second.
Second into our list commission to put an ad in, uh, visitors' guide with the C V B. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Um, so are, we're hoping to have all of the ad sales done by the end of this month. Um, and then have it sent to get printed by the end of October. This way, with the holidays and all of that, it'll take, it takes them around two to three weeks to get it back to us to proof it. And then, once that gets done, then there's Thanksgiving and then there's Christmas. And so ideally, I would like to have the visitor guides ready to distribute like first week in January, especially because this year, we didn't have them until the beginning of the second quarter. So I think, I I do think that because of that, it's affecting our ad sales a little bit. Um, but yeah, so that's, that's that. Um, and then to touch on the digital marketing um, campaign that you guys had approved for us to do for the football games. We were, the plan was to have a digital marketing campaign for the last three home games of the of the season. Um, technically, the first of those three games is is gonna be on October eleventh. Obviously, we're past um, September eleventh. So, I did get the ad sent to me on Friday. I didn't love it and so I'm not comfortable with putting it out there. Um, so what I'm thinking is the last two games are November first and November twenty ninth. So instead of doing a thirty day campaign, we could do maybe a forty-five day campaign. And that can take up the thirty days of what was gonna be the one for October eleventh. They, they're, I just got an email from Kim at K S and T right before I got here. Their um, production team is about two week, working about two to three weeks out. So that gives us just a gra- about the right time to start um, advertising that second week in October if it's approved. I mean, I just don't want to add fuel to the fire with people like, oh, my gosh, this is a ridiculous ad, you know, and and I just, I don't want mining behind it because being the department head, I just, I wasn't happy with with the ad. So, um, so that.
It would be sent to the markets of those.
Yes, so so the November first one is Texas Tech, which, I don't know exactly which town. I know it was.
Lubbock.
Okay. Um, so they would be marketing directly to folks that are watching other college games or whatnot um, for forty-five days before this November first. And then the second one would be in Boulder because they're playing against the Boulder Colorado team. Um, and so my focus is, and I think, did you, did you get a chance to to look at it? Like, one of the pictures that was on there was a year, who, nobody's gonna stay in a year necessarily in October, November, you know. Um, so we did send them more pictures about, my thing is, we're trying, we're obviously trying to get them to stay with us here in Gary County, do the two nights, stay the Friday night, go to the game on Saturday. Um, we're offering to build you an itinerary. So let's say you're in Texas and you're gonna come watch the game. So Keith, you give us a call at the C V B, we'll build you an itinerary, we'll get you a welcome bag um, for visiting. So we've got uh, the clear stadium bags with the C V B logo, a logo on there and then just a bunch of swag. So koozies, water bottles. Um, uh, my plan is to go to a couple of the restaurants in town and get coupons for, you know, hey, get a free appetizer with a meal or something to obviously entice people to spend their dollars here in Gary County. Um, and I did talk to several of the hotels and they're willing to give me like a five room block. So that this way, if let's say four of them decide yes, so then we'll have twenty rooms that are blocked specifically for these guests that we're trying to target to come in and spend the the weekend here, basically.
And you'll give them option of where they stay.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And um, you know, like, I'm sure the Hampton will be one of the first ones to to fill their room block because they're newly renovated or what whatnot. Um, so I did talk to five different hotels. One of them said that they're sold out for all their K State weekends, which is great for us, you know.
All the hotels were usually.
Yeah, and and I did, so before I I decided that that's kind of the direction we wanted to go, I did make sure to to say, to go and find out, cause I, the last thing I want is to spend all this money on this marketing thing and then be like, oh, sorry, we don't have anywhere for you guys to stay. So there is at least twenty rooms available throughout Gary County that has, that is willing to give us, you know, a rate for for these guests.
Twenty rooms amongst all the hotels?
Mm-hmm. Well, I mean, and so the reason is, former hotelier, I hate to ask them for more than five rooms because then they, they're gonna sell their rooms for more than.
She just got twenty, just that's the one that.
So just to get, to get, yes, yeah, they definitely have more than that, but the hoteliers.
What if they call and ask about being Airbnb?
Yeah, I mean, so that's, that's something that I've been thinking about maybe getting with Travis. I think you had mentioned it at one point where he can tell me who has the Airbnbs or I don't know where I would necessarily get that information.
On on um, on the Airbnb website. I mean, it shows that. I mean, that might be something that we have.
And I just.
I have never um, found all of them either, so.
And so, though, my only hesitation with the Airbnbs is if it, if they just have the one house or the one property.
Yeah.
And if they could sell it to.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean? So it's just for me, it it makes more sense to do it at the actual hotels. I mean, yeah, if they wanna stay at an Airbnb and I can funnel them to, you know, maybe once all the twenty rooms are booked, then we can start saying, hey, well, here's a list of different or Airbnbs that may be available too or something to that effect.
I think it's a good idea. I just um, think um, too, that uh, historically, I think, once again, that we know that uh, like you said, those hotels are booked. You know, the people that come, you know, Colorado and Texas, those, all those teams have been here before and so they probably book when they leave, you know.
Yeah, well, and that's why.
But I'm sure that they book ahead of time. I think it's a great idea and I bet um, you're gonna be talking to audiences that's never been to K State.
And that's what I'm I'm hoping for, you know, is to, again, to offer them like, hey, we have this whole area.
I think it's a great idea, even if they were coming here one way or another, if you had those bags to give people with your information in them when they, you know, you give ten bags to all the hotel, even the hotels to give.
Right. Like if you're specifically going to the game, like here, carry our bag to the.
Right, because when they get here, then if they had coupons and stuff in them, then, you know, that might be a way to entice them once and get all those that are.
And that's, that's honestly something that I'm hoping to snowball into the World Cup stuff, you know, it's like if it works for these football games, it could potentially work for.
Everybody likes all those little things when they get.
Yeah, I mean, now, you can't take a water bottle like this in, but you can take a koozie. So when you buy your beer, you pop it in our koozie or whatever and you don't have to buy a ten dollar koozie at.
I I support the idea. I just, um, yeah, I I I'll be interested to see.
Yeah.
Hands out, cause I think it's a wonderful idea.
Yeah, I mean, and it's, I don't think it's anything that's been done before. So if it's something that we could, you know, cash in on, and we could potentially do it for baseball and for basketball and for like all the other sports that are.
Like I said, to have something for those that already made reservations, it's not gonna have the opportunity to hear that that are already.
Right, yeah.
They, you get ten that are already booked and ten that are coming and they'll say, you know, cause they all usually hang out together.
Right, yeah, usually it'll be like if the four of us are all going together, then.
So they'll say, well, I booked ahead of time and I got this and I.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so instead of the three games, it'll be two, just because again, I don't, I don't want to push an ad out there that.
Well, just for you and for, just to try it.
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of good just to try it for a couple.
Yeah. Um, and then, um, I went to, I had my first two days for the Flint Hills Regional Leadership Program. So that was interesting. Um, I had never been to Rock Springs besides just to take a quick tour. So we did an overnight there and then we did the Gary County Tour, which was pretty neat. You know, I, we got to tour the um, the jail and Trish and um, Rana did a a thing at the city building, which was really neat and it was two full days. I did a whole ropes course, which I thought at my age, there is no way I'm gonna do it. I was sore for like a week, but it was fine. I um, it was definitely something that um, I appreciate that you guys, you know, have allowed me to to be part of it. Um, I also have a call out to Civic Plus for our website. Um, before, when I first got here, I had a meeting with them at their offices and it uh, compared, comparing our website to a lot of the other C V B websites, um, were pretty antiquated. Um, just our our calendar alone, you know. So that was something that is, I feel like has been fallen through the cracks a couple of times. There's been meetings set up and then nothing happens, meetings set up and then nothing happens. So, the fact that I went to a meeting there at their office in March, I did have a follow-up last week because I feel like it's falling through the cracks again and I, I really, i- it's not, um, even on the county website, when you click on this, like the C V B link, it goes to our old website, which is dead, the junctioncity.com or dot org or whatever. Um, and so that's another kind of on top, on the top of my list kind of thing that I would, I would like to get squared away. And then, the last thing I have is I'll be out of the office this Friday on the nineteenth. I don't know if Crystal gave you guys my thing yet.
Yeah, put it on your desk.
And then, again, um, again on Monday, the twenty ninth. And that's it.
That's all I have. Who does the county website?
Civic Plus, yeah. Yeah. And I only knew about it because when I was talking to the Civic Plus guy, he, we were on a Teams call and he was sharing his screen and he clicked it and he was like, oh. I said, yeah.
I know it's gotten a lot better than it used to be, that's for sure.
Yeah.
I, um, I think that a lot of times with that, when people, that's where people were gonna go to and if you can't get through it or it's slow or whatever, there's nothing more aggravating.
Yeah.
I usually dump it and say, I'm not gonna mess with it.
Yeah, and that was, that was the case with the four billboards that we have. They were, they all had the old website on there and I don't know how long it was.
I think that's another, uh, would be a good avenue for you. I mean, that would, and, you know, I just think you need to promote C V B and you need to have all the tools to do that.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, that's all I have. You all right? Do you guys have anything for me? Else? All right, thank you. Oh, and the tires are all, we have four new tires on this vehicle, so we can drive it again.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. I I did call you and stuff and somebody, I, two people actually let me know and I was like, well, when did it happen and blah, 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 but I thought, well, I better at least try to.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I, um, Ad- Adam actually called me on Saturday morning at nine and in talking with Anthony from the radio station, he had left his car because he went to call a game or something in Lawrence. So he had left his car parked at this, at the building and he said he got back at like one forty-five in the morning and the tires were all intact when he got there. So, it happened like, yeah, later, like early, obviously, Saturday morning. So, all right, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
The Whites aren't coming today. I invited them this morning. I sent an email and said if they would like to come, they're welcome to, but, um, I think the purpose of the discussion today is that you guys are interested in the property, selling the property, um, that you've received and offered. And then we need to um, settle for a hearing.
Well, let's do that and then do the executive session.
Okay.
Cause it's just a, the executive session is just for information only. There's no, gonna be no um, discuss or no uh, action.
Okay.
So I was looking out, dark it is, it's weird, it's infringing on my rolling tile.
You know, it's this weird, I think we're talking.
And and this property is in tax sale?
Yes, and I'll give you guys a overall deep brief of it and we can talk about it. Um. Have you not been to this?
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry if I would have known yet.
Thank you. Keith, why don't you do the um, discussion, um, Grand Avenue discussion and then do the, or the uh, executive session?
Yep.
Okay. Um, the commission has received an offer to purchase ten forty-two Grand Avenue. That's the old A B C Cab building from the Whites, Brad and Jade White. They have, I think it's Outdoor Unlimited. Is it Outdoor Unlimited? And then the, and then an adjacent property. They've maintained uh, and mowed that property for the past two years. Um, and they've submitted a bid for five hundred dollars. Ten forty-two Grand Avenue um, was offered in nineteen C V two fifteen. That was the last tax foreclosure sale. Um, it did not sell, it did not receive any bids. We offered that again, it was C L A five thirteen. We offered it again on a sealed bid sale on O three twenty-one, twenty-two. The highest bid received at that sale was two hundred and one dollars. Um, and we rejected those bids and did not sell. So it's been offered for public sale twice. Um, without a bid that was accepted or sell, was sold. Um, the bid that the Whites did is five. Um, the bid that the Whites did is five hundred, so it's considerably more than two hundred, um, under K S A seventy-nine twenty-eight oh three. Um, if a parcel has not sold, and it's been offered for sale to the public, the B O C C can enter into a negotiated sale. Um, we're going to need to have a hearing, we'll publish, uh, who the buyer would like to be. We're going to publish the price and the location, and then have a public hearing on it. Um, so if you would like me to schedule that, um, the Whites said that they could do September twenty-ninth. Um, and we can get the notice sent to the paper to get it published and hold that hearing on the twenty-ninth, if that's agreeable to the commission, and they'd like to sell that property.
It's my understanding that they would demolish the building on their own cost.
Yes, the building is, um, in disrepair. Um, I think it's been on the city's, they're, they're white, and they would like to tear it down. Um, that is one of the reasons I think it would be a good idea to sell it this way, because if the city tears it down, that would be a special assessment that would go on the property, and when we offered it at a tax sale, the new buyer would be responsible for that. And the Whites feel that they can tear it down, um, for less than the city, and they would like to sell the property.
I'm good with moving forward.
Yep.
Okay.
So you'll publish.
I'll, I'll get a notice, print it up, and I'll get it to the court's office, I think. Ms. Teresa, is it noon on Friday?
Yep.
Okay, we'll, we'll get it done by noon on Friday, so it can run in the paper.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Um, well, then I make a motion that we go into executive session, um, for about ten minutes for non-elected personnel with, um, us and, uh, Regal. Hold on a second.
The member saying it, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Um, and what, what have we got?